Okay.
All right.
Continue.
Okay, thank you. We'll go through the roll call then. Lori Bickford.
Your worship, I'm here.
Thank you. Ron Kelly-Sperles.
I'm here, your worship, thank you.
And Craig Bowser.
I'm here, your worship, thank you.
Becky Goodwin.
Yes, I'm here, your worship, thank you.
Dwayne Acton.
I'm here, to your worship, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dwayne. Michael Beal.
I am still here, your worship.
Donna Beal.
Thank you, your worship, I am here.
Jamie Burke.
Thank you, your worship, yes, I'm here.
Counselor Finney.
I'm here, Deputy Mayor.
Counselor Butcher.
I am here, thank you.
Counselor Black.
I'm here, thank you.
Counselor Evans.
And I am here as well, thanks.
Counselor Michio.
I am here, thank you.
And Michael Tower.
I am here, your worship, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move Counselor Michio.
Thank you.
I'll sign that, Michael Tower.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Tower. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's carried. The first item on the agenda is a public presentation to amend the municipal bylaw, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Bickford.
Thanks, thank you, your worship, members of council. I'm actually going to share my screen, just so that you can be with the presentation. So as the mayor has indicated, tonight is a public presentation for the municipal plan amendment. This is also going to require a zoning bylaw amendment as well. Essentially, what it's doing is the introduction of abattoirs into the industrial designation of the plan. So under the Community Planning Act, council is required to hold a public presentation for any amendment to the municipal plan. And this is a formal announcement of council's intention for the amendment, as well as it sets forth the formal request for writing comments in on the proposed amendment from the public. So to provide a little bit of background on this particular request, just to give you that general statement again, the municipal plan is the document that the town has adopted that directs the future development of the town. And this is that long-term view of how we see the town growing, and as well as it provides the general goals of land use within the town. Currently, the bylaw does not provide any directive on where abattoirs are to be located within the town boundaries. However, when you review the different designations that are within the plan, the industrial designation is the area which is most suited to this type of use. So currently, it talks to the direction of the industrial designation, having good highway access for distribution of products, and having limited impact as well on residential neighborhoods. And generally, this is the area of the town where more intensive land use activities, like manufacturing and processing, would actually be direct within the town. So to proceed with amending the bylaw, the town would be looking at introducing policies around permitting an intensive resource zone in the industrial designation, as well as permitting abattoirs within this zone subject to a development agreement. So essentially, what it would be doing is looking at any time an abattoir was proposed by an applicant, it would have to go through a rezoning process, and then it could be examined on a site-specific basis within that industrial designated areas of town. So these are the two policies that have been drafted up to accomplish these two objectives for the plan. So the first policy is that is a policy that, within the industrial designation, councils shall permit industrial and intensive resource zones. And the second policy being, it is a policy that abattoirs are only permitted in the intensive resource zone through a rezoning by development agreement. In considering a request, councils shall consider the separation between residential neighborhoods, methods of disposal of any non-domestic waste, health and environmental considerations. I've highlighted the two areas within the town that have been designated for industrial. So these are the two areas where potentially we could be looking at entertaining these types of requests. So the map on the left is our active industrial area. I've highlighted where the Public Works Department is located to help everyone orient themselves. Again, this is that area closest to exit 506. And it is the fully serviced, we do have public roads within this area at present time. And it's where industrial development would be encouraged to be located. The map on the right is the undeveloped future industrial area. This is set aside at exit 500, which is the Walker Road exit. And this area is currently unserviced, but it was designated several years back mainly to allow for that future growth of industrial development within the town. So again, I'll just kind of reiterate that this is the public presentation, which is that formal announcement of council considering the amendment to the municipal plan. Ads have been published on the town's website setting this is the public presentation, as well as beginning to engage the public with submitting written comments. And the next step, of course, will be the public hearing, which gives the public actually the opportunity to speak regarding the proposed amendments. And this will be held on November 9th at 7:00 PM in a virtual council meeting. And that concludes the public presentation.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bickford, are there any questions? Okay, does council have any questions of Ms. Bickford? None? Okay. We'll move on then to the application for rezoning of Reservoir Road.
I will just share my screen now again. So staff have received an application regarding a proposed map amendment to both the municipal plan and the zoning bylaw amendment. So keep it in mind that same industrial area that we just talked about, or the industrial designation in the previous presentation. This actual request is looking at that area that's the undeveloped industrial. And the proposal is actually to rezone a portion of that property at the end of Reservoir Road, from industrial to rural residential. So the map on the left again is that Walker Road industrial designated area. This area was designated back in 2009. And it was recognized during that plan review process that the industrial park at exit 506 was nearing capacity, as well as there was limited potential for further expansion, mainly due to the rest of the town had developed around it. You've got residential close by in our downtown area. So at that time, this area up at the exit 500 was looked at as being a primary in town where there was limited development already occurring. It had good highway visibility, as well as it had direct access to the Trans-Canada Highway. And it was seen as all positive aspects to creating this area as a future industrial area. And there was approximately 206 acres in that location that was accessible. To put that into perspective, approximately 140 acres is in the current industrial area. The property that we're looking at, though, highlighted in yellow, is actually the applicant's property that's under consideration. So it's a total of about 84 acres, but he is actually looking at the lower portion at the end of Reservoir Road, which is highlighted in the dashed red line. It's about 24 acres. And the property has been in his ownership since the 1980s. And prior to that, it was actually a family-owned property. And his intention all along has always been to return to town and to eventually build his house on this particular property. The 24 acres, he has indicated that the reason why he's looking at that particular size of property is it allows him to maintain his own personal buffer, should that area develop as an industrial in the future, as well as it allows him to have some flexibility on where his house would be located on the property. The other thing that he was kind of looking at was the clear distinction of how he could locate where that zone is. So you'll see in the northern corner, it does follow property lines to some degree, although this property will all remain as one single property at this time. So the photo on the left is the frontage of the property on Reservoir Road. You'll notice that this is primarily a vacant wooded land. There are some blueberries, though, that are growing on the property as well. The property, or the photo on the right, is a view looking from Ogden Mill up Reservoir Road. And you can see that Reservoir Road is primarily a rural residential development, and that the road was designed accordingly. So it is a dead-end street. And it was never the intention when we set out to pre-designate that area as industrial off Walker Road, that Reservoir Road would be used as an entrance or an exit for that future industrial area due to the design of that road. So in the course of steps for this particular proposal, council will see a resolution come forward next meeting. And if they're interested in entertaining this particular amendment to both the municipal plan from the future land use map, so it would look at taking that bottom portion out that identified, and creating it, or making it rural residential, leaving the remaining industrial. And then they would be doing a very similar situation with the rezoning on the zoning map. So we'd be looking at replicating that as well. Council's not interested in entertaining this particular amendment. They can choose, of course, not to enter into the resolution next week. And that concludes the overall discussion of that.
Are there any questions on this presentation? Counselor Michio.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I guess my question is, in that area, I mean, it's been some time now since that was adapted into the municipal plan. Are there other areas within this that the planning commission is maybe seeing as becoming more for residential use? You know, so now there's a chunk of this property gone. I mean, the person owns the entire piece of property. However, that in itself may limit development of that property, right? If that person doesn't want certain type of business around their, where their houses. I'm just kind of wondering if the planning commission has seen any other inquiries, foresee any other type of requests of this nature coming forward that would impede on that area further as being the next spot for expansion in regards to industrial growth, I guess.
Yeah, so at this present time, of course, this is the only property that has shown any kind of interest in doing anything of this particular nature. In this, although we haven't officially started the process, I will say that, you know, one of the things that looks at this particular property is that location access right off Reservoir Road. So, you know, recognizing that we would never really want to, or well, we never really intended for industrial to come off that particular road anyway. That's why this one at this time is not an unreasonable request. Looking at some of those other larger parcels, you know, there may be a very different view of it at that time. But this still also leaves approximately 60 acres left as industrial area. So we're still not, we still have a large sizable industrial area left that could potentially be developed up there once services are extended.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Evans.
Yes, just to clarify, unlike our current industrial park, which was owned by the town, the land was owned by the town and we sold it off. The land up there, which is designated industrial, is it correct that it is all owned by private individuals? The town does not own any of it currently?
You are correct, they're all privately owned.
Yeah, and there has been no great rush to develop this area. So this was done in anticipation of requiring land. If somebody wanted land already designated industrial, they could use it. But this is land that is, that he owns, and he wants to develop it in a certain way. And I just wanted to clarify that, this strikes me as very reasonable. And as I say every time this presented to us, it would have to be a really terrible idea to me to vote against starting the process to consider it. So thank you for clarifying this, and I see no such objection.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Bickford. And we'll now move on to item three, the LED digital sign at the Civic Center. Mr. Acton.
Thank you, your worship. As council probably remembers, back during the budget time, during the budget process for 2020, council approved the replacement of the Tantrumir Veterans Memorial Civic Center sign board to a new LED digital sign board. So as part of this process, we worked to put together an RFQ for the new digital sign with minimum requirements, all the deliverables, specifications and details around the RFQ. And we developed the request for, an invited request for quotation 2020-1313. And we invited one local company and three of the large sign companies out of Moncton for the invited RFQ. And when we closed the RFQ, the 2020-13, on September the 24th, we received the following four bids for this invited RFQ. Troop Signs out of Sackville, Hanson Signs out of Moncton, Signway Limited out of Moncton, and Geno Signs out of Moncton, New Brunswick. All bids were fairly competitive. And the low bid, of course, came from Geno Signs at a low bid of $34,055.49, HST included. Council, in their package, would have seen that the budget information for this item, the budget was $33,082.10, HST included. So you can see we're relatively on budget, slightly over, about just under $1,000. And again, we would recommend that council award the RFQ 2020-13 for the LED digital sign board for the Tantrumir Veterans Memorial Civic Center to the low bid of Geno Signs out of Moncton for that low bid. And there would be a motion coming forward, Your Honor, next Monday night during the regular council meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dwayne. Are there any questions? Counselor Michio.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. My only question is, so this was a request for quotes. So are we obligated to take the least amount quoted of all the folks who were approached?
Thank you, Counselor Michio. It typically has been our process and our policy to do that. Again, it is a request for quotes, but it was done similar to a tender where they submitted their bids to a tender box or RFQ box. It was opened as a public opening. And typically, we would honor the low quote on any of our tenders/requests for quotes. And requests for proposals obviously are done a little different, where we evaluate based on different criteria. But that was not the case in this particular project.
I guess the thing is, is that we're, I just wanted to get some clarity around that, because, I mean, we have a local company there that's provided a bid. I know it's, you know, I guess over the budget amount, maybe four and a half thousand, or, you know, 4,500 bucks, a little bit high here. I'm just kind of wondering what legal obligation we would have, or if there'd be an issue if we chose not to go with the lowest quote, as opposed to the lowest tender, I guess.
Well, if you're asking for my recommendation, I've given my recommendation is to go with the low quote. Again, it was, everyone was on equal playing field. They had specifications that they all had to meet. And again, it is, when you do the math, the treasurer may be able to do it quicker than I can, but the percentage is quite a bit higher.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more questions? Counselor Evans.
One of the constant challenges we get when we ask for people to bid on projects is to get a significant number of bids. One surefire way to get people to not bid would be if we didn't honor the lowest bid. I am sympathetic, we all would love to have local people be successful. But I've asked this question early on in my tenure on council about doing something like that. But if we were to not honor the lowest bid, I think companies that are in business would start to not bother bidding on our projects, and we would then be stuck with very few tenders, or people offering on them. So I think this is an established practice for good reasons, and I support it.
Thank you, Counselor Michio. Sorry, Ms. Acton.
Sorry, your worship, I just wanted to kind of reiterate what Counselor Evans said. And I know that we, I wasn't with the town at the time, but we had gone against a low bid. I know it was a tender in the past. And we were taken to court, and I believe the town lost that court case, in which case we had to pay the low contractor some settlement.
Thank you. Counselor Michio.
Thank you, I guess, as follow-up, again, I'm just looking for clarity, because ultimately, we made a decision in regards to road salt that went to a higher-priced firm. So I'm just kind of wondering how it is in that case. We made the decision to go with a higher price, not fearing any ramifications. However, in this case, there might be concern.
Your worship, if I could, I see them as two different situations. The situation with the salt was, we had a longstanding relationship with a contractor, neither of them were local contractors. The salt from the competitor is up in the air right now, with not sureing whether they're going to be able to provide salt in the future. And I guess it was my recommendation that we would stay with the company that we have a longstanding relationship with, and had good service, good quality salt from. Neither of them were low local bidders, and that was the reason, those are the reasons for going with the salt.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Acton. Are there any more questions? Okay, we'll move on, policy bylaw, and Ms. Goodwin.
Thank you, your worship, members of council. The BIA imposes a levy of assessment on all business properties within the area described in our bylaw number 128. Bylaw 128 has been in effect every year subsequent to 1987. An annually revised bylaw relating to establishing a special business improvement area levy comes forward in order to establish the rates for the upcoming year. Assessments for business properties within the BIA area are provided to us by the province. Once those are received, section two of the levy bylaw will be updated to reflect the proceeds of the levy. It would be our recommendation, as in previous years, that council give first and second reading to bylaw 277, a bylaw relating to establishment of a business, a special business improvement area levy in the town of Sackville at our next regular council meeting of October 13th.
Thank you. Are there any questions on that? Okay, Ms. Bickford, or sorry, Ms. Goodwin, next.
Yes. So staff are looking to have three policies repealed solely for housekeeping purposes. So the first one would be policy 2017-03, the Heritage Grant Criteria Policy, which was passed in 2017. The policy refers to the Heritage Conservation Bylaw, which is no longer in effect. The next one, in March 2020, council gave third and final reading to bylaw number 271, a bylaw relating to establishing a code of conduct for members of council. This bylaw supersedes the Town of Sackville's Code of Conduct for Elected Officials policy. And the third, in 1998, the Inventory Control Policy was passed by council. And then in 2007, council passed the Accounts Payable Processing Policy, which supersedes the Inventory Control Policy. So it'd be our recommendation that at our next regular council meeting, that council would repeal these three policies.
Thank you. Any questions? And I understand those will all be repealed in one policy, or one motion, I'm sorry?
That is correct, your worship.
Thank you. Counselor Finney. Yeah, I have to unmute Counselor Finney.
The policy that was in place before the one in March, who was that, I guess, who was the one that would probably, if there was somebody out of line, who would be turning around investigating that at that time? That policy that was in place then? Was the council the same as this one? Or was it recommended that there would be an outside investigator?
I'd have to refer to the policy, Counselor Finney, I can do that and get back to you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes.
Is there any more questions? You still have your hand up, Counselor Finney, did you have something else, or?
No, that's all, your worship.
Thank you.
Excuse me, your worship, if I may?
Yes.
The code of conduct policy that was in place, if I just may read a short piece, it says, "Any reported violation of the code will be subject to investigation by..." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Beal.
Okay, next, early morning weekend ice rates, Mr. Acton.
Thank you again, your worship. Over the last number of years at the Veterans Civic Center, we've not been successful in renting the early ice time from 6:30 to 7:30 time slot on both Sunday, sorry, Saturday and Sunday mornings. This current, the current rate for those 6:30 to 7:30 on Saturday and Sundays has been considered prime time. I know for myself, that's definitely not prime time. So as a part of this, we were feeling that if we were able to change this time slot to non-prime time, that it would become more attractive for minor hockey or some of the other groups to be able to rent the ice time at the non-prime time rate. And obviously, it's a profit that we currently are not getting because no one's renting that time slot right now. And in order to do that, the fee schedule would need to be amended. And that's the reason that we were wanting to bring this forward to council, to see if council has wishes to change this. um, has wishes to to change this time slot um, at six thirty to seven thirty on Saturday and Sunday to non-prime time. And that would be, I believe, uh, ninety ninety three dollars, uh, would be the non-prime time rate. And again, we we feel this will will, one, we'll be able to rent the space, and two, it'll help out the the minor hockey or some of the other groups, um, with that, uh, lower, uh, lower rate for ice time during that. And let's face it, it's a little easier for moms and dads to to get them off to those early mornings on Saturday and Sunday where they don't have to go to work afterwards. So I I think it's, uh, something that would be very worthwhile in doing. And, uh, again, it would be our recommendation that we would, uh, amend the fee schedule to to include these two uh, time slots as non-prime time rate, and we would be looking to bring a a motion forward, uh, next, uh, uh, next, uh, regular council meeting next Monday night. Thank you, your worship. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Acton. Counselor Evans.
Yes, at our, um, uh, special meeting where, uh, groups from town made presentations to council prior to our budget process, we had two presentations from groups that rent time at the rink, and they are feeling the pinch. And so this is a nice way to make, uh, the ice service available at a reduced rate. They, you trade off the convenience, uh, of time for a reduced fee. So I think this is, this not only perhaps will get more people using the rink, because you said this is a time that the rink is tends not to be used, but it also is in a way, it is a way for these groups to rent ice, uh, at a reduced rate. So I like this idea.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay, uh, next up is the business survey results. Mr. Kelly Spurles.
Thank you, your worship, uh, members of council. Um, this is essentially, uh, an information, um, item. I'm going to go through, uh, some feedback or some of the results of our business, uh, survey, and some of the things that we're trying to do to, uh, address the results of the survey. And I'd be glad to hear any comments or discussion, of course, from, uh, from council. Um, as we know, the COVID outbreak continues to evolve, and the town recognizes that the pandemic is, uh, going to have a lasting economic impact on local businesses and and local residents and workers as well. So with that in mind, following the June twenty second, um, council meeting where relief measures were discussed, we created an online survey to give us a better understanding of how COVID nineteen has impacted local businesses and how we could best support them in these challenging times. Uh, the survey was on for ten days on Survey Monkey, closing on July thirtieth. We had forty five respondents from a variety of sectors, including lodging, nonprofit community, professional services, restaurant, bar, retail, music festival, banking, seasonal celebrations, Parks Canada Agency, real estate sales, construction, grocery, arts and culture brewery, taproom, craft alcohol sales, massage therapy, naturopathic clinic, travel in the arts. And I I went through that whole list just because I thought it was important to mention, um, all the different types of businesses that we had that participated in the survey. Um, in our report, I provided a detailed summary of the survey answers. But some of the highlights, uh, and some of our plans for dealing with the highlights include, um, number one, people would like some funding for PPE and or for businesses who want to pivot, and an emergency fund was also mentioned. Uh, so it was noted that Renaissance Sackville funding could be explained and promoted more. So there's a couple of things on that front. Uh, one of them is Renaissance Sackville has recently sent out a call for applications for funding, and I know that they would, uh, consider things for for both of those topics. As well, uh, just recently, the CBDC has, in fact, just today, has sent out information about a new program called the Canada United Small Business Fund, and that program is specifically, uh, targeted towards, uh, towards PPE. Um, I'd be glad to provide anybody who would want information on, uh, that program, uh, contact information or where to find it, but it it could be found by, um, searching CBDC in the Canada United Small Business Fund. Um, the second item that was brought up was people are concerned about the border checkpoint, and it's costing business. Uh, our response as of a few days ago was, uh, this has been highlighted and discussed by the mayors of Sackville and Amherst. We will keep looking for opportunities to address it, and I'm sure as everybody knows, uh, that checkpoint, at least the part coming into New Brunswick, is being lifted on October eighth. So that problem actually has been resolved. Um, several people ask for masks to be mandatory, and this was previously discussed by council, and we have made masks mandatory in town buildings, which we believe, uh, provides leadership and an example that hopefully others will follow. And of course, there's also talk of masks becoming mandatory in the province, uh, relatively soon. Uh, a shop local campaign was encouraged. Uh, we've taken a number of, uh, front initiatives on this front. We have twenty three plus partners with our our business passport, which is, I went out, um, in, uh, August. It was given out to all of the incoming Mount A students, and, uh, it's been distributed around town. We've had a lot of positive, uh, feedback on that. Uh, as you may probably know, with that passport, um, if you go around to a business in town, you get them to stamp it, uh, spend more than ten dollars, and if you get more than ten stamps, you can come back to town, I'll get a free T-shirt, and be entered in a contest. Um, we have a new sackville.com explore page with an emphasis on local businesses. Uh, we're working on the possibility of another passport in collaboration with the, uh, BIA Main Street Organization, and we're also helping them with, uh, Moonlight Madness and other programs. We're supporting the establishment of a Chamber of Commerce branch. Uh, we're exploring an online shopping mall type, um, uh, site for local businesses. And we're also offering to support, uh, pa- package creation for local businesses. If any businesses want to create a package together, we will, uh, pay for the design of their ads, uh, help promote it, and we'll promote it through our 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 beans as well, through social media and website and so on. Um, it was mentioned this could be a long-term issue. This is not item five in the, uh, highlights, and we need to think long-term, not just short-term. And we are continuing to plan with council and among, uh, staff and managers. And we've also started, uh, monthly meetings with local businesses, which will be the last Tuesday of every month. Um, number six was a focus on helping, focus on helping businesses learn how to change or how to keep going under these circumstances was suggested. We've seen a number of workshops advertised, uh, on that subject. Uh, there hasn't been one held for specifically for Sackville businesses yet that we're aware of. So we're going to look at searching out somebody who would be able to do that sort of a workshop for Sackville businesses. And the number seven item, uh, the highlights, the last highlight item was it was suggesting the town could take a leadership role in leveraging community-held assets, uh, not necessarily those struggling businesses, but of community members to help local businesses stay open. This could be done through investment vehicles such as community economic development cooperatives or other such avenues. Um, when I wrote this report, um, last week, this was an idea that, um, uh, we weren't really sure uh, that was, this was something that the town could do, or we weren't really sure if anyone else was doing it. In the interim, uh, I have had a discussion with Wendy Keats of the, um, Cooperative Enterprise Council of New Brunswick, and it turns out that they are doing almost exactly this type of a program, and they're just about to launch it. Uh, it will be a, uh, Community Economic Investment Fund, and there's an organization called the Grassroots Community Economic Investment Fund that are working with them, uh, to launch this. So if any, uh, business is interested in possibly, uh, getting investment from this fund or anybody is interested in investing in this fund, uh, they can contact Wendy Keats. And, uh, if you contact me, I will, uh, forward her your her email to you, or I will connect you with her, and she'll put you on the list of people to get information as soon as that fund is active, which should be very soon. Um, so those were the things that we identified as the highlights of the survey and the, uh, things we've been working on to try to address them. We are continually, um, looking for for new ideas. We, of course, as everybody understands, we have, you know, somewhat limited resources. Our staff is quite busy. Um, we don't have a huge budget, but we are working very hard to try every way we can to support local businesses and to support, um, people to try to get through this difficult period. So, uh, I'd be glad to answer any any questions that anybody might have.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Kelly Spurles. Um, I have one question. The, um, Explore Sackville page. Uh, that is that sort of virtual shopping mall?
No, this is a new page that is, um, for, uh, there's two di- two different things. Explore Sackville page is a new landing page for visitors. So, um, it's, we haven't, uh, we're we're just in the process now of kind of getting it. It was launched, I think, about a week ago, so we're in the process now of kind of spreading the word about it. But basically, if you do, uh, sackville.com slash explore, you'll come to that new page. So it's a new landing page, and it has a whole bunch of really local things on it, like, uh, uh, walking tours, uh, highlighting local businesses, that sort of thing, so.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Council Evans.
Not a question, just a comment. I was delighted to see, uh, these initiatives, and I was pleased to see the number and variety of the responses. So well done.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Uh, move on to, uh, bunker gear and Chief Bowser.
Thank you, your worship, members of council. Um, as recently as part of our, uh, biannual advanced inspection and cleaning of our bunker gear, it was identified that two of our sets did not pass the advanced NFPA inspection and needed to be removed from service, and we would be looking to somehow replace those. In speaking with the technician, he indicated that the gear did not pass due to the sunlight, the ultraviolet ray damage that was coming through the glass on the apparatus bay doors and had ruined the physical integrity of the outer shell of the bunker gear. This said, after speaking with our supplier of our current bunker gear, he indicated that he knows one other department within our coverage area, or shirt, pardon me, within our area that has also had to alter their windows within their apparatus bays with a tint covering to reduce the ultraviolet impact and reduce the sunlight exposure within the gear rack area. This said, I've spoke with that chief and, uh, am doing a review of what is required to reduce the exposure moving forward and to minimize the impact of any further bunker gear from being exposed to UV impact. Uh, and we will look to have a motion of council, uh, on October thirteenth to purchase two sets of bunker gear to replace those two sets that have been taken out of service. Um, and they held the price that we awarded five sets earlier this year for two thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars a set, plus HST for a total purchase of six thousand four hundred and ninety dollars and sixty cents.
Thank you, chief. Any questions? Council Evans.
I can't help but notice that this, uh, PPE, which, uh, the meaning of which is known to all of us nowadays. Uh, this is the second time, so first of all, this stuff is so important for protecting firefighters, and yet this is the second time we've had to deal with protecting the equipment while it's in storage. You had a a leak of some kind that was causing it to deteriorate, and now it's sunlight. So, uh, it's kind of ironic that the stuff that's so good at protecting firefighters needs protection when it's off duty. Anyway, I'll support it.
Thank you. Council Micho.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I have a few questions, actually, um, and I'll, I guess I'll I'll do them individually. That way, just, uh, look for the responses there. So this, the biannual inspection cleaning, who conducts this, uh, for the municipality, and how long have they been doing that?
So Clean Heroes out of Nova Scotia is the company that's, uh, been doing the inspection, and they've been doing it probably for the last year. Uh, and prior to that, any gear that was, uh, considered damaged or of a concern or if they had holes, they would be sent to Atlantic Bunker Gear in Nova Scotia to be inspected and repaired and sent back to us.
And how old are these two sets that have to be replaced at this point in time?
These two sets, both of them are two thousand and twelve sets of gear.
Um, and, um, so they've been exposed to this, uh, these sun rays or whatever since two thousand and twelve. What, um, uh, what concern is there of other equipment? Like, how many other, uh, sets of bunker gear might be at risk here due to this?
So in speaking with, uh, the technician from Clean Heroes, he alluded to that all, uh, he has no concerns with the rest of the gear at the present. Those two sets of gears sit at the very front end of the gear rack, uh, in the apparatus bay. So they are extremely exposed to sunlight, but however, there is three or four other sets of gear down the rack that, uh, we do notice some ultraviolet impact too, but the outer physical integrity of them has still been maintained and still have passed to this day with no concern.
And, uh, my last question is, I guess, as the design was being looked at for the fire station component of Town Hall, was this a factor that might have been, um, overlooked in the fact of where these, this, um, bunker gear is kept in conjunction to the the bay doors and the windows?
Um, that's a very good question, Council Micho, but however, I can't answer that because I was not involved in that side of the, uh, design phase.
And, uh, just as a follow-up, I know one thing that, um, I've heard about over the years just is exhaust, um, is exhaust venting. And this is totally something separate, but I guess when we're talking about personal equipment and safety, um, when the vehicles are operating or started, uh, within the bay, um, what type of exhaust venting is there in place to ensure that those fumes are are vented out and, uh, aren't causing any sort of harm to personnel?
So as part of the design phase of the building, um, there's two different types of systems that can be put into fire halls um, within the apparatus bays. One is a Niederman system that the hose connects directly to the exhaust of the unit, and it just discharges on the unit when it goes out the door at the end of the track. And what we have in place is what we call an air mation system, uh, which exhausts their big units at the top of the apparatus bay, and I believe there's five to seven of those units, uh, which exhausts the minute the door goes up, those exhaust hoods stay on, and they exhaust all the carcinogens and exhaust that was been disposed of in the bay or discharged from the apparatus, pardon me. And then when those grad stores come back down after the rigs return, those units stay on for fifteen minutes as well to continue to off gas anything that, uh, has returned to the station that may or may not have been exposed.
Great, thanks very much.
Thank you, Chief Bowser. Are there any more questions? Counselor Finney.
Craig, can you tell me, as a matter of fact, are we going to be putting tinting on that glass so that won't happen again?
So yes, we are, we have reached out to one company for sure to date, uh, and they are coming in to look at it possibly this week, um, to review to see what is needed. Um, but there will, it's nothing that's been budgeted for, so it will be an additional expense that will be coming forward to council in the very near future for consideration.
And the other question I have for you, the life lifetime of these suits is what, ten years, and then they have to be changed?
Ten years, that is correct.
So we've gotten eight years out of them anyway. So they would have been coming up pretty soon with, uh, it's a shame it had to come now, but we're lucky we got eight and not the ten, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, can you lower your hand? Thank you. Okay, any more questions, Chief Bowser? Okay, we'll move to the fifteen-minute question period now. Um, remind the public, if you wish to ask a question, hit the raise hand button function on the, uh, bar at the bottom of the screen here. And, uh, when I acknowledge you, turn your camera on and unmute your mic and ask a question. And we remind you, the questions are, should be about what we discussed tonight, what has been presented. Okay, are there any questions from the public? Uh, Ms. Landon, Laura Landon, please.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. It's Bruce Warwick here, uh, signed in under Laura's name. I have a couple of questions. Uh, the first one has to do with the, um, Sackville Heritage Grant Policy that you're going to rescind. Um, what will be in place? Does Sackville have anything in place to encourage the preservation of, uh, heritage buildings in this town? That's my first question.
Okay, um, I think I'll refer that to, uh, Mr. Burke.
Yeah, thank you, um, Deputy Mayor Aiken, and, um, thanks for the question, um, Bruce. We have a zoning bylaw in place with, which provides some, um, you know, very kind of elementary, um, requirements where somebody at least needs a permit if they're, if they're going to demolish a building. But, um, that would be, that would really be the the extent of the, um, level of. Um, some time ago, as you know, council made a a decision to repeal, um, the Heritage Bylaw, um, and dissolve the Heritage Board, Board of the Day. Um, that, um, kind of legal process has never been reevaluated or reintroduced. So that really in New Brunswick is the is the level of protection um, under applicable legislation to protect heritage properties in the in the municipality.
Thank you. I guess my question was more toward the encouragement of the preservation of heritage, which the grant policy did. Um, I know there, the the protections are gone, um, but there seems to be nothing there to encourage people, I guess, in the former conservation zones to protect or to, uh, preserve the heritage of those buildings. So. So that, I guess, the town seem, if I'm correct, seems to have washed its hands completely of the preservation of heritage and encouraging homeowners or building owners to preserve heritage. But I'm not sure if I'm right about that.
Now, Mr. Burke?
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and thanks again, Bruce. I, I wouldn't say that's entirely true. Our strategic plan does talk about heritage protection. One of the things that we, we agreed to do in, in this year was to kind of reevaluate the heritage grant program. And while the bylaw and heritage zones may no longer exist, the, the Local Governance Act does allow council to issue grants, albeit those grants need to be reported annually in our annual report. So the idea was always that we would, the, the bylaw and corresponding zones would no longer exist and the board would no longer exist, but that a new kind of program would be, would be introduced. As you know, we've, we've been focused on other things since, since March. So that is something that is on our radar. Those funds were carried through in our 2020 budget. And, you know, we would expect to see them again in the 2021 budget, which would be subject to council approval.
Thank you. And my second question has to do with the results of the business survey. Would it be possible to get a copy of that, of those highlights or the results of that survey? Hard to write a story just on the verbal presentation tonight.
Mr. Kelly Spurles?
I guess I would defer to Mr. Burke about what we're able to release publicly.
Deputy Mayor, if I can?
Sure.
Yeah, thanks, Bruce. Sure, we can make the, the results available. We can't release, obviously, the, the name of the individual who made certain, certain comments, but certainly the summary of the, the items that Mr. Kelly Spurles outlined today. That's definitely something that we can share.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Bruce. Are there any more questions from the public?
I have a question. Yes, hi, sorry, I can't find the hand, the raise hand function on my phone here. In terms of adaptation funding for local businesses in light of COVID, I believe you mentioned Renaissance Sackville would be the way to distribute that help. So, and they've put out a call recently. I'm wondering if council or staff are giving consideration to additional funding for Renaissance Sackville since they have sort of a regular amount in a normal year, what they do for local businesses. And this is, as we know, sort of a special year and could be a special couple of years for local businesses. So I'm wondering if there is further discussion now that we know there is some funding needs, will that be up for discussion again?
Mr. Burke?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor Aiken, thanks Erica for the question. I guess right now, within our existing operational budget, Renaissance Sackville has twenty-five thousand dollars allocated. So in, in the, the previous motion that council authorized, that transferred some money to Renaissance to accommodate several grant requests, it was outlined to Renaissance that I guess final approval of, of grant applications would, would rest with council. So what would end up happening is that a local business could make an application to Renaissance. Renaissance would adjudicate, review the application and then provide a recommendation back to council on the, on the grant. And then council would end up releasing the, releasing the funds. So right now, there's, there's twenty-five thousand dollars in our existing 2020 budget. So that should be enough, I would think, to get us through the, the end of the year. But certainly, giving further contemplation to Renaissance in 2021 is an item that council will consider as part of the 2021 budget process.
Okay, but that, so, but the twenty-five thousand a year is the norm, is, I'm, can I understand that twenty-five thousand is the normal yearly expected budget for Renaissance Sackville? And so that won't change this year?
Now, Mr. Burke?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor Aiken, thanks Erica. That's, that's correct, I would think at the, at the present time, and you're, you're absolutely right, twenty-five thousand dollars is the, the typical kind of allotment provided to Renaissance. However, I guess there's nothing preventing council from entertaining, you know, if, just in terms of a hypothetical situation, in the event that Renaissance's latest call was, you know, wildly successful and they needed more than the twenty-five thousand dollars by November first, council could very well contemplate some additional money within the 2020 budget to transfer to them.
Okay, all right. And just one quick question regarding the, the ice fees. We don't have the, any reports or anything to refer to, so it's hard to catch what's going on in this discussion meeting sometimes. What was the percentage discount for, that was being offered? Like in a percentage, if, if we could, yeah, what is the discount from sort of the normal fees?
Mr. Acton?
Yes, thank you, your worship, and thank you, Erica. The, the, the normal fee for a prime time ice is one hundred and fifty-five dollars. And that would drop to a non-prime ice time of ninety-three dollars.
Okay, all right, thank, thank you.
You know, sixty-some dollars difference.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Erica. Are there any more questions from the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to, for council to go in camera.
I move that council move into camera.
Thank you, Councilor Power. Have a seconder?
I'll second that, Councilor Butcher.
Thank you, Councilor Butcher. All is in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we're, we're moving, we're moving into, into in camera. I'll ask members of the public to leave the meeting now, just use the little hangup button on the left-hand side of your, or the right-hand side of the bar.